I'd everybody to stand and go into the believing. To the quiet of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under a indivisible liberty and justice for all. Okay, the district wide safety plan hearing is called order at 6:00 P. M. You're up.
Stephanie. All right, again, this hearing is to review the district wide school safety plan. It is a New York State requirement and an annual hearing that is required by education law. So what I thought we should do first to so everyone's aware, the district wide safety plan, it is a public document, and I just wanted Shannon to hopefully be able to bring up the document. We show everybody where it is on our website. So this is just our Whitney Point homepage, and go to the district tab up top, and you scroll down to the school safety plan. This is where the document lives, and it's up there 365 days here. So again, we go through this every year. We have various changes, and that's what I will review with you, the proposed changes to the plan for this current year. We'll have the hearing and again, take any feedback or questions. And then it's actually a 30 day period for public comment. So anyone that may have comments on it can get those comments to me. If there's anything major or different than what we go over today, the board will then be approving the plan at the next board meeting. And again, any of those comments that do come in, we can obviously update the plan accordingly. So that said, I'm going to go through again a little bit of the background of the district wide safety plan, and then I will also review this year's changes. So the process for adopting the school safety plan, again, I'm reading the education law printout on this. A school board must adopt district wide school safety plan after public comment period at least 30 days and at least one public hearing. Current copies of district wide plan and any amendments thereto are submitted to the commissioner of education within 30 days of adoption. Each safety plan must be reviewed by our respective team at least annually and updated as needed. What must be included in district wide school safety plan? District wide school safety plan consists of a comprehensive, multi-hazard school safety plan that covers all school buildings and addresses crisis intervention, emergency response, and management at district level. District wide school safety plan should be designed to prevent or minimize the effects of violent incidents and emergencies and facilitate coordination of schools and school districts with local and county resources in the event of such incidents or emergencies. District wide school safety plans must include protocols for responding to declared public health emergency, including communicable disease that are substantially consistent with provisions of Labor Law, Section 27. So with that said, we will go through our current school safety plan. And Shannon, do you mind just scrolling all the way to the end around page 15? Every year or every time the plan is updated, it is possible for it to be updated multiple times in a year if there is some major change. Those revisions are documented within the document itself. So you can kind of see revision 23 was July 2020. And what I'm going to go over now are revisions number 24 to district wide school safety plan. And for you guys, some of us here in a minute. So the proposed changes to the school safety plan for this current year. On page six, just again, a lot of these are grammatical cleanup and really personnel turnover changes. So we're putting new people in those roles. On page six, I'm sorry, Ken, you kind of got, I guess, the. I don't know.
What version I have?
Yes, yes. So page six, again, it's going to be a little hard to find every one of these because they did not highlight on the specific plan. But if there's any changes or questions from you guys, we can obviously take a break and go see where that was. But on page six, there was a reference to Bozies that was wrong. GST Bozies is actually the one that helps the district coordinator plan and update it. There was a wrong GST reference, so that was changed to the right Bozies. On page nine, we're talking about our community partners. And one of our community partners, Head Start, recently had a name change. So we incorporated that into the plan. They are now greater opportunities for rooming and English. Page 18, again, as we go through this, there's a lot of numbers that may be needed in the event of a crisis or things like that. So even as we see phone numbers, I mean, you were going through, reviewing these, calling these, making sure they're all current. So again, some of the changes are those. Except that on page 18, we updated the local Red Cross phone number. Page 21, we updated the location of Brum County Mental Health Department. Again, they are now located in the mall. They were previously downtown Bington. On pages 24, 26, 27, and 32, we changed repeated references from influenza pandemic to infectious disease pandemic. This was actually a change we had to do last year during the COVID crisis. Again, we had to have a response for, at the time, it was referenced as influenza pandemic. I think as COVID-19 pandemic rolled out, again, we become more knowledgeable. We now call this infectious disease pandemic and not just influenza. Page 28, we added designing continuity of learning considerations for developmental needs in addition to skill level, again, this enhancing after what we went through last year to really properly reflect some of our pivots along the way to address all needs and skill levels and developmental needs. Page 30, updated staff members under the delegation of authority for personnel changes. Again, every year we have some changes. We have assistant superintendent, new manager supervisor, and the new principal. People roughing accordingly. Page 32, we inserted the most recent CDC guidance relating to COVID-19 prevention in K through 12 schools. And this was the most current information available as of August of 2021. Previously, it was the, I guess, the only guidance that came out when this COVID-19 pandemic started. So that was from March of 2019. 2012, thank you, John. And then page 33, we updated language regarding schools' response to COVID-19 to remove dated language referencing there is no vaccine available and added a statement that schools keep abreast of current guidance and regulations and monitor the transmission rates in their area. Schools, through the use of layered mitigation strategies, can help stop the cycle of infection. Almost done, I promise. Page 35, updated emergency contact information for the American Red Cross Poison Control Brum County Emergency Management Director and the County Triangle Supervisor. Again, one of those things that just every year, there's normal personnel changes. Page 37, updated personnel on the district safety committee and the emergency response team members. And lastly, on page 38, we updated the present sun Bolton address and phone number. So those, after a detailed review of this 52 page document, are the changes that were recommended to the district wide safety plan to be adopted at the next meeting in October. Any questions? Go ahead, Brian.
Yes, is our copy the change copy or the previous copy?
It's the proposed revised copy.
Okay.
And you see that?
Influenza in there probably about 12 times.
Okay, well, we tried to catch it all within the actual pandemic section. So was there a few other spots within that? Okay.
I'm just looking through right now, and I just found two, but.
28 of them.
Yeah, we'll definitely look at that and update it accordingly. Thank you, Brian.
Or 14, 14.
We will fix that. Any other comments? Okay, and again, if anyone wants to see the old plan, that's how you access it on the website. And again, if they're paying on public comments and the board approval at the October meeting, this new plan will then be uploaded to the website. And this plan would actually be distributed to local law enforcement and to a lot of the other district personnel and building offices. So everyone has the current copy.
I see that the parent representative with the T V D. Is that normal, or you just don't have a parent that's interested right now?
Yeah, it was actually personally Nina Perry, who was very involved with the plan itself and the school safety committee. So my, my thought on it was that the next school safety meeting, which is a week or so, to ask that group if they have another interested party. But if we don't find someone, then yeah, we'll have to figure out another way to really get someone that would, you know, be too good for that role. But if you know anyone, yeah, definitely let me know.
How is the parents selected? Is there a selection process or just curious?
Yeah, from my knowledge, again, I think Nina's been in that role for as long as I know. So was there a selection process at the time? No, she's probably nominated and graciously served. But that said, again, she was very active in the plan itself. But really, that role again, besides offer that perspective of the parent, is again, they attend the bi-week or bi-monthly school safety meetings, and they are around 2:15 in the afternoon. For anyone that might be interested, obviously, we want them.
Being available for the meetings at the next. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, one more question.
Sure.
Yeah, I was surprised that I actually listed people's names. Typically, they list their titles in documents like this. So then if they change mid-year or end of the year, you never have to do that. It's kind of executive or whatever. It's first person to person.
Yep, that's a very good observation. I was thinking the same thing as I was going through this year. But I also think it's for those people that may not know those positions. If you have a name to it that's current, I think, again, that could potentially be a better contact in the event you really do need to contact some of these people. You know, some school members may not know who the school business executive is, but they might know exactly what it is, for instance.
And I would also think that if you're enacting these plans, there's something going on. And it may be easier and in a more timely fashion to contact somebody by name than by title.
Agreed.
I know that there, I agree with Brian. We have local kinds of documents. The college that we try to keep as many areas as we can with the generic titles to keep as easy as possible. But for Stacy's sake, I know that we also, when we have a document that we have to do that, we actually keep the documents scored with tags so that a secretary or support specialist knows to go right where the tags are and check them so that you don't have to search the whole document. So I could suggest that as a supporting piece of help.
Yeah, I mean, again, for Phil Dean used to be involved with this regularly. He retired. So this was my first year doing the full review of it, and it was honestly really helpful for me because, I mean, even though I'm involved with the school safety committee and helping create a lot of these plans, just a refresher of, you know, how often do you read through a 52 page document, you know? Yeah, I was surprised by some of the things in there, but I understand why they are. Some of it is the requirement that it needs to be included. Any questions from the public?
Have you got any questions about the safety plan?
Take Dr. Driscoll ahead.
Want to comment?
Yeah, for the, yeah, for the district wide school safety plan?
Your question. But I haven't heard of your plan to manage. Are you on a, are you in favor of universal ask for the district? And are you wanting to encourage vaccines to be available? For those that are older, are you encouraging them to be vaccinated? I know. Masking is.
Yeah, great question, Dr. Driscoll, and I believe Dylan might get into a little bit, a little bit of that later. But for the district wide school safety plan, we, again, mirror the CDC guidance at that time. So we, again.
CDC guidance is out there.
Yep, and that's what's in our plan. Yeah.
What is your plan? I, I, if I was a student, if I was a parent who came here and said, I'm through the district, I have a child in kindergarten, I have a child in high school. What, how are you going to make my children safe from being in fires?
So Dr. Driscoll, we have an entirely separate plan for mitigation related to COVID-19.
Well, would you share?
Sure, I will. But just to tell you, so this plan is more generic. It has to do with all sorts of emergencies that may come up. So our, but I can give you a little synopsis. And we follow, as we're required to by New York State Education Department and the New York State Department of Health, we have to follow CDC guidance. So in our district and across schools in New York State, there's a mandate that everybody on school grounds wears a mask. So it's, it's not a question. Everybody has to wear a mask while they're at school.
Okay, and that also applies to the, the staff?
Everybody, everybody.
Bus drivers, everybody.
Everybody.
How about the vaccination status?
So we, in our school, we have offered a number of clinics. We've just inquired again to offer another clinic out here on our school grounds. The Department of Health is working on getting vaccines that they can bring out in a mobile unit. So we will continue to do that. We currently are, you may know this already, that we are supposed to start to implement testing of all faculty and staff, substitutes and contract workers on school grounds. So we're developing a plan to put that together for everybody. And so we follow all the guidelines within the school as far as three feet apart in between seats for students. We co-work whenever possible. We have cleaning and disinfecting routines that we have in place. We have specific seating charts because if we do have to contact tracing, which we do occasionally, we have all that information very specifically. We follow the rules Department of Health gives us for those things. Six feet of distance for adults and three feet for students. That's the rules for contact tracing. And then we share information with families that if you, they agree, they get tested every month to not send their child to school. If their child has any symptoms at all, their child can't come to school until they get a test saying that they are negative and they are symptom free and they have to stay in communication with the school nurses. And families have done a really wonderful job of that and partnering with us. That keeps everybody safe in our school community. And the same thing goes for faculty and staff. Everybody needs to, all the company up when they're well and can't come back unless they have a negative COVID test and they are symptom free. We have periodically keep people out. We've been creative in what work looks like. We have students sometimes having to be at home because they're either quarantined or isolation or they're just home waiting to arrange for a test. So we have online learning materials ready for students so that they can stay in the loop of their education. And the same thing for faculty too, if there is extraordinary COVID-related circumstances that sometimes may be an iteration, so that they are teaching remotely to make sure that we don't have any, as much as we can, spread it on school grounds. So we work very hard to keep our school community as safe as possible.
Excellent.
Thank you for going into the depth that's required here, okay? Is that, is that in the minute, or is that in the, written in the plan?
There's a separate whole plan for COVID, and I can, I can give you a copy of that. It's on our website also. We have a whole page for COVID-related information.
Okay, this is available to the public as well. I guess I would just make the point that, briefly, I remember a lot of graduate at Whitney Point School System. I listened to low grades. I received some vaccination in school. I can't, it was so long ago, I can't tell you what happened. But the river vaccinated, like all kids are, you have to use so many vaccinations. It's crazy. School is where the kids come, all over this district. It's one of the biggest districts in New York State. So the rural isolation that many of these poor families have is only, is only helped here at the school right along with the lunches that kids get. I encourage that you, as your health officer or nurse practitioner or physician, who could give a shot if it was requested by the parent or allowed by.
You may know we work with UHS, but the person that works with us is a nurse practitioner, and she is actually an alum also here at Whitney Point, but she doesn't.
She is here at Whitney Point?
Yeah, and she works here. She works at different schools, but she's here some of the time. And she works with our nurses. But in order to, for vaccinations, they make a referral out. Like I said, we, we work with the Health Department to try and bring those here as often as we can.
Yeah, they can vaccinate these kids. The only transportation they have is a bus, you know, to bring them in. So that's about it. Sounds like a good plan, yeah. I would encourage, since we're probably wearing masks for a long time, I hope we don't have to shut down. But audio visual club, if they could do mic-ing, so we can hear you loud and clear. I had to move up here, of course, I won't, I don't hear well. There's going to be a lot of, I think there's probably some more discussion on the board about the, the, this epidemic that we face and there's. So far, so good. Thank you.
Before I close the hearing, did you have any questions about the safety plan?
Thank you. I apologize, my meeting ran long.
Not a problem. Zach, do you have anything else to add?
Oh, no, nothing else to add, but I think what we'll do after this meeting is postpone. Tomorrow, we will put the new plan on the website so people can peruse the proposed revisions. And again, any other comments that they would like to be incorporated, reach out to me directly. I'd be happy to do that. And then again, the next October board meeting, the board will see the resolution to approve the plan. And if there's anything different than what's already in this, I will let you guys know those additional changes.
All right, we need to approve the motion to adjourn the district wide school safety plan hearing at 6:22 P. M. They have a motion?
No.
I have Kathy and Eddie. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Now going to move to our regular agenda. And where the meeting is called to order at 6:23. There is a need for an executive session right at the beginning of the meeting. So we are going to recess the public meeting at 6:23. To hear a discussion of contractual discussions. They have a motion to move. Thank you, Chris. And second, thank you, Deanna. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? We will be right back. Okay, we are pre-meeting to a regular meeting at 7:46 P. M.
Six.
Yeah, sorry. Someday I'll get away with that.
Okay.
Whoa.
Correspondence, we have none. Policies for first reading, we have none. Policies for second reading, we have none. The Board of Education, we come to our first opportunity for comments from the public. The Board of Education encourages public expression on school-related matters. Public comments that deal with personnel matters and or discipline issues that reveal the identity of specific individuals either directly or indirectly will be prohibited. As stated in Whitney Point Central's School District Policy 3230, public complaints, questions about a specific nature should be directed to the appropriate office during school hours. The meeting chairperson has the right to limit and or extend any and all discussions. His or her decision will be final. Please state your name and residency before you begin and keep your comments brief so all members of the community may have an opportunity to speak. We will be going forward from now until forever. We will be limiting comments for three minutes from the public. Do we have somebody online who's ready or not quite?
We did have someone who wanted to make a public statement. Unfortunately, they contacted me that they cannot do it at this time. They were going to email the statement, so it's either myself or John get it. We will read it at the next public comment opening at the end of the meeting.
Okay, okay. Um, does anybody here in the room have anything for public comment? Dr. Driscoll?
You know, this cool doctor here for years and years and years. I work with a number of nurse practitioners and practitioners. It's not a well-trained position, assistant nurse practitioners, kind of who ran out of time to take a good general care of our patients in the office. I tried this previous school board to encourage hiring a nurse practitioner at the school. There are several small schools. I'm not sure what the situation is now that they're retired, but they can provide healthcare if it's permitted by the students paying their parents to be treated. And I guess where I saw the most interesting.
Hey, Dr. Driscoll, do you mind moving up a little bit closer? This is our speaker for the Zoom people that are attending. So if you could just move a little bit closer, they can pick up your voice. Yep. This is the microphone. This.
Oh, okay.
It's spacious.
Studio.
I, for years, I would come back and forth through the board, probably five years, and say, hey, you know, nurse practitioners, they can do these physicals I'm doing. These are perfectly healthy individuals. They're kids, you know? Any issue they had at birth or things they acquired in childhood were well-known to the school if they were debilitating or harmful, mostly very healthy individuals. But they had to have that physical like every three years or so. It was an opportunity though for kids to come in and be seen, be checked. I've already seen this particularly with young women maybe who have trouble with issues and would benefit probably from a good physical exam. And if the practitioner is able to prescribe, maybe some contraceptive would be in order. It's got to be approved by the parents. And I guess that's what's making me think someone of this is, if Roe v. Wade makes it harder, they've got to move to a different state to get, get healthcare or terminate a pregnancy. Again, those are very personal things. Young girl often would benefit from that contact with someone who cares about them enough to intervene. I'd like to see that. But yeah, UHS and boards, they're all, they're the big corporate medicine now. You won't find a doctor by the practice. But they have a responsibility, I think, to reach out to the community, the schools that may be offered. You've got a nurse practitioner doing physicals. I'd just like to see her work, be able to work as a practitioner in the school, seeing and treating kids for simple things. But because these kids, the only way they're going to get this is if they're coming into the school on the bus or that are free to contact this person confidentially. I strongly support hiring a nurse practitioner for the school. There probably are fundings you could get to pay for them. I would think these large institutions, boards, and UHS can well afford to put a person out there sexy patients that are writing prescriptions. Take care of them. That's up to you guys. Thank you.
Is there anybody? Is there anybody else who has something to add?
Okay, as a reminder, there will be a second opportunity at the end of the meeting. That brings us to commendations. Okay, we would start our commendations. We could go on and on, but a few outstanding things that have decorated the beginning of school. We'd like to commend Mrs. Guzman, faculty and staff of the CEA for two successful CEA events. Popscles on the Playground, held on August 24, 2021, and Outdoor Open House for grades K through three, held on September 7, 2021. We had great turnout for both and lots of happy people. And it was just perfect weather too. Really great luck. Wonderful. Mrs. Hibbard and pre-K faculty and Mrs. Guzman again for organizing and executing a successful virtual pre-K orientation held on August 25, 2021. Mr. Whalen, Mrs. Lamorelia, and the Whitney Point PTA for a successful fourth grade breakfast held on August 28. Mr. Whalen, Mrs. Lamarelia, and the Whitney Point PTA for a successful fourth grade breakfast held on August 28th, 2021, which has now become a really nice tradition. Mr. Whalen, Mrs. Lamarelia, faculty and staff for a successful sixth grade orientation held on August 30th. And Mr. Sweeney and Mr. Isaacs for a successful ninth grade orientation held on September 1st. And then as for the faculty and staff here, Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Shannon Gillette and the Whitney Point Central School District Leadership Team for providing support and information while implementing successful superintendent's conference day on both September 7th and September 8th. And all Whitney Point administrators, faculty, staff, students, and families for a successful start to the school year. Many, many happy, happy children. Smiling, you can see their eyes, just happy to be together. Kids skipping and laughing and so glad to see all their friends instead of just some of their friends. It's been, it's been a joy to watch. So thank you to everybody. Okay, old business, we have none. Brings us to the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion? So I have Brian and Kathy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, appointments. Approve the four-year probationary appointment of Sarah Frenal, Physical Education Teacher in the Physical Education Teacher tenure area effective September 1st, 2021. The probationary period of September 1st, 2021 through September 1st, 2025 is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of Section 3012 of the Education Law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual performance review ratings pursuant to the Education Law Section 3012-D of either effective or highly defective for the required number of years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher should not be eligible for tenure at that time. May I have a motion? So thank you, Tom and Chris. Any questions or comments? This is, I'm not sure if you guys can hear, this is the position that was vacated by Sidney Chapie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the four-year probationary appointment of Catherine Pullen, Music Teacher, in the Music Teacher tenure area effective September 1st, 2021. The probationary period of September 1st, 2021 through September 1st, 2025 is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of Section 3012 of the Education Law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual performance review ratings pursuant to Education Law 3012-D of either effective or highly effective for the required number of years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. May I have a motion?
Someone?
I have Dinette and Eddie.
This is a position that was vacated by Christopher.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Todd Wilson, Term Substitute Technology Teacher for the 2021 to 2022 school year effective September 1st, 2021, pending completion of certification. May I have a motion? Thank you, Kathy. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Eddie.
So this is a position that we've actually had as a standing opening for a while now. And Todd comes to us with a lifetime of really interesting experiences. I'm very excited to be working with him and for him to work with our students.
Mr. Wilson, did you want to interject anything?
Certainly. I just want to thank the school district, the school board for this opportunity. For me, having taught 20 some odd years ago when I left to get a master's in New York State, said that that master's wasn't in line with what they wanted for a teacher at the time. I, I thought I was walking away from education then once and for all. And I stayed, I got a doctorate, I got a law degree, and realized it wasn't at all what I wanted to do. I went out in the industry as sexed, it was a long path to get back and to have the opportunity to be back in a classroom. All those thoughts over the years of this would be so neat to do in a class. It was, it's amazing to have that opportunity now. And I'm thrilled. I'm excited. I'm scared to death and I'm having a ball. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Can I just get one there? The term means full year. I just wanted to make sure.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, approve the appointment of Dylan Nardochi, Term Substitute Math Teacher for the 2021 to 2022 school year effective September 1st, 2021, pending completion of certification. May I have a motion? Thank you, Dinette. And a second? Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments?
My son has him in geometry and paths will love him. I'm very excited to have him.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Matthew Vival, Term Substitute Music Teacher for the 2021 to 2022 school year effective September 1st, 2021, pending completion of certification. May I have a motion? Thank you, Kathy. And a second? Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments? Okay, so this is Jenny Gatt's position. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Kelly Lewis, Typist, effective September 7th, 2021. May I have a motion?
Some of them.
Thank you, Dinette. And a second? Thank you, Eddie. And this, this is a replacement for Katie Rittaus. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? And I saw Kelly just before school started and she was very excited about the position.
She's thrilled. She's loving it.
Yeah. Approve the appointment of Amanda Desmond, Part-Time Food Service Helper, effective September 10th, 2021. May I have a motion? Thank you, Kathy. And a second? Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Brittany Riley, Part-Time Food Service Helper, effective September 9th, 2021. May I have a motion? Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Chris. Um, any questions or comments? Any questions by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Emily Berber, Part-Time Food Service Helper, effective September 7th, 2021. May I have a motion? Thank you, Kathy. And a second? Thank you, Eddie. Any questions by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Rachel D'Amico, Part-Time Teacher's Aid, effective September 7th, 2021. May I have a motion?
Some of them.
Thank you, Dinette. And a second? Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments?
I think it's great seeing families from our school district who kind of didn't work out so well with their employment during COVID because of their kids being homeless, we're now working for the district. I think it's great. Any state of just, you know?
She was very excited. I was happy to to serve as a reference for her because she's volunteered for me at the library for many years, so. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? The appointment of Aleah Ishnali, Part-Time Teacher's Aid, effective September 7th, 2021. May I have a motion? Thank you, Kathy. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dinette.
And Chris.
Chris, sorry. I was doing good for a while there.
It's tough enough.
Um, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the following technology integrators for the 2021-2022 school year. Michael Williams and Navy Ferguson for the CEA, sharing position in Stipend. Carrie DeTondo for the T.R.A. and Jean Jordan for the high school. May I have a motion? Thank you, Tom. And a second?
A second.
Thank you, Dinette. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Oh, are they?
Yep.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Yes, yes, yes. That's good. I thank you for both of you being willing to take on that position and it's important because there's a lot of technology out there and it's hard for everybody to figure it all out on their own. Approve the appointment of Kelly Cobert as Deputy Treasurer, CBO for the 2021 to 2022 school year. May I have a motion? Thank you, Kathy. And a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
This just as an update, we previously approved Dale Ball at the July reorg meeting, but he has since retired. But Kelly is his replacement.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, we're going to move to the agenda. Approve the appointment of Roberta Flanders, Bus Monitor, Subject to Fingerprint Clearance. May I have a motion? Thank you, Tom. And a second?
A second.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments?
This is a position sponsored by Ashley.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Shelley Chrysler, Part-Time Food Service Helper, Subject to Fingerprint Clearance. May I have a motion? Thank you, Kathy. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, approve the appointment of Jeff Frost as the Local Education Agency LEA, a specialist designee for the 2021 to 2022 school year. May I have a motion? Thank you, Eddie. And a second? Thank you, Dinette. And these next couple for him are just because he's New York. Yeah.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Jeff Frost as the Integrative Test Management Control Coordinator for the 2021 to 2022 school year. May I have a motion? Thank you, Kathy. And a second?
A second.
Thank you, Brian. Favorite memory was the year that we put Mary Hibbard into that position. All those in favor?
I have a quick question. I have nothing to do maybe without with this, but it does have to do with testing. Is all of our worms up there?
Uh, yeah, they've been used in the field and we stayed off it for the recommended amount of time and it's been receded and it all came back.
Thank you.
No more slimy grass.
Grubs, yeah. And the grass is off it, though. Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Grade Department Chair Persons and Team Leaders, K through 12 Music, sharing a position in stipend are Jessica Williamson and Jennifer Hayes. May I have a motion?
Some of them.
I have Tom and Dinette. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the 2021 to 2024 contract between the Superintendent of the Whitney Point Central School District and the staff organization dated August 31st, 2021. May I have a motion? Thank you, Kathy.
A second.
Thank you, Dinette. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Good question on that. It would be tentative agreement. We don't have a physical contract yet. I'm trying to remember what we typically do. May I have to say tentative agreement?
Okay, Kathy and Dinette, are you okay with changing the wording to the tentative agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is the rest of the board still voting aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Zach.
Yep.
Approve the memorandum of agreement between the Chief Executive Officer and the Association of Clerical Employees dated September 14th, 2021. May I have a motion? Thank you, Dinette.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Anything on this one, Zach? I don't want to go too fast again. I'm sorry.
No, I think I want to.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Field trip request to approve the field trip for FCC LA State Officer to Villa Roma Resort in Calicoon, New York, October 22nd through 24th, 2021. May I have a motion? Thank you, Brian. And a second? Thank you, Dinette. Um, I think a couple of us had the same concern about how are we going to ensure that our student and, this is God for you, are kept safe during this conference?
So this field trip and everything that we're involved with, again, you have to ensure is that wherever they're going, and you may have seen that they're traveling separately.
Yes.
And families and, you know, taking responsibility, but while they're there, that all guidelines are followed there too. So, you know, just like we do here, we separate kids out and have their mask and they have clean protocols in place and outdoor spaces where they can and I feel that sometimes it is. But in everyone in this situation, this one is far.
Right.
A whole other discussion.
Yeah, I, I would just like to say that, um, I personally would like to see Eve have her home run or maximum one roommate. I know that in the literature, it said one to three roommates. I would be more comfortable with her either being alone or with one roommate. I think that four, four room at this point means sharing a bed and but I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
Yeah, no, I mean, so the setup for the, the place is, and then we have to make our own decision about what's the safest way that we can have our students.
Yeah.
Travel, stay there, you know?
Yeah.
Those, you know, those two prompts, but and with each of the situations, we're just going to talk through, so how can we handle this? How can we still make it happen, but not completely? I can't imagine.
Were there any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, that brings us back to our regular agenda. Um, and it's time for Superintendent's update.
Um, so maybe I'll talk about field trips first. Field trips and all the events that normally populate our school year. Each and every event that is important to us, that is important to the happiness of students, important to our event that is important to us, that is important to the happiness of students, important to our learning experiences, we're going to have to examine individually. And so, you know, for, this is an example, so can we do this? Can we do it safely? Um, is there a backup plan? Can we get our money back if we, if it falls through? I mean, we have no way to predict what's going to happen in a month or two months or three months. So some of these things are more complicated. So when there's fundraising involved or you have to make financial commitments where we can't get money back, I mean, those are the things that may, you know, we're going to have to take a very hard look at. Um, and, and situations where we don't have a lot of control over the way things are going to play out and we can't, we have to be very, very cautious about each of them. So there's not going to be a sweeping rule. Um, so there'll be more to come on that. Um, you, uh, just as, you know, this is kind of a big thing. You, you probably know that we've got recovery funds. Um, some of them, they have different strings attached to them. Um, some of the, the guidance we're still trying to figure out. Um, but one of the things that we're trying to look at is how do you take short-term funds and have a lasting impact? So we're looking at a lot of things, but we're, because we're in, we're looking, we're working with architects currently, um, for the, for the upcoming project. Uh, we explored with them the, the possibility of, we have wanted to have pre-K rooms. We ran into a, a roadblock. We thought that we could add on to the addition that we already had. Um, we can have more pre-K classrooms than we currently have right now, um, but we don't have spaces for them. There's a possibility that we might be able to use some of the stimulus funds, which again would be short-term funds that could fund things that for the time being, that would be short-term to actually have something that would be add to our district for years to come. So we are, just as a heads up, we're, we've asked them to look into that. Obviously we're concerned, I'm concerned about the timetable. Could we get it done within the window when we have to get it done? I don't know if you want to add to any of that Zach?
Yeah, um, again, currently the guidance for these stimulus funds are, is still being updated and released periodically. But we have to have like a preliminary budget for our initial idea of what these funds may be used for done by the end of September. Um, again, I, I think as we, as Duane said, try to figure out what would have the most lasting impact. Now, there's a lot of room to do facility upgrades with that, with those funds. A lot of neighboring districts are tackling ventilation and things like that. Um, but that's kind of where we had the conversation of, you know, maybe it's expanding our pre-K and especially in our community would be more impactful. Um, but there are, again, currently time restrictions, as Duane said. Right now, the guidance that you have to have everything done and signed off on by the summer of 2024. So again, we have the benefit of, we're already kind of planning this project and construction next few years. How would that look and would that have any impact on our current construction schedule? So there's a lot of moving pieces involved and we kind of have to at least lay out our initial thoughts on, is this a direction we may want to go? So again, that's where we'll come to the board tonight to kind of give you a, you know, a heads up of where our, our thoughts have been and what we're thinking and we'll also feedback on it.
Um, you had mentioned that some school districts are doing ventilation?
Yep.
Is it possible to do some of both?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's kind of, you know, where do you allocate these dollars? Um, Whitney Point, um, we're looking at roughly $5 million of a budget. So is there enough money? Yeah, absolutely. Uh, but you know, that money is also geared towards the learning loss, facility upgrades. It has a portion for this. Uh, you know, I think I would feel comfortable saying, you know, upgrading your pre-K classrooms or building new ones is a great way to address learning loss. Um, feel comfortable with that. Um, you know, our, our district is not in a bad place with our ventilations. Um, you know, could it be enhanced? Yeah, we could definitely look at that. I also wouldn't want to spend a full allocation just on building upgrades. I don't think that's a, a great use of funds either. Um, you know, we still want to have after-school programs. We want to have, you know, uh, after-school activities. I mean, anything we can do to really try to, again, with the intent those funds are for, to, you know, catch kids up and get them back where they need to be, should be a focus of the budget too.
Yeah, I actually had two questions. One was, I know over the years with budget tightness, I noticed with my kids here that it was not a lot of money spent on hardware, whatever, for the school, like science equipment and things like that. Um, I know a lot of times like microscopes, just simple things, you know, getting better quality and getting enough. I mean, you know, it's hard to go through science without the one microscope or whatever it was in classes at the time or one some years ago that, uh, more hardware distribution between different, uh, classrooms or something like that. I mean, obviously that wouldn't be $5 million worth, but I mean, I think, you know, over the years, I believe that's been lacking of buying hardware.
Yeah, that's a great point, Brian. And I think, you know, uh, as we're still trying to figure out the budget for these items, it doesn't need to be finalized. We have to just do our initial submission. We have time to amend and to, you know, pivot as we go. But yeah, to add money for equipment, tire supplies upgraded, I mean, I'm sure, you know, we send that to, uh, a lot of department chairs, they would have a longer list of items that could be updated.
So just to be clear though, so looking at that project doesn't preclude that. I mean, there's enough funds.
Well, I'm not expecting $5,000 for the hardware.
Right.
Enough?
Four and a half.
Then he isn't part of it.
I was gonna say, you know, given this music department, I, I know there are a lot of instruments that need to be replaced.
Yeah.
I know that we've had a lot of parents concerned about the fact that Whitney Point doesn't have air conditioning. I, I'm not one of the board members that thinks everywhere when the school needs to have air conditioners, I can't even imagine what our heating bill would be. Yeah, um, but I know that they have some good resources now to have some portable air conditioners for rooms that seem to be a little warmer or uncomfortable or kids that have special needs where a cooler climate could help them be in a better situation. I'm just wondering if maybe we could think about some of that, maybe a compromise, um, to help warm some of that.
We're doing that in the, in the current project too. So that, that has now become part of those conversations, like every space, you know, and which ones do we prioritize? And certainly where we have our summer programs and for renovating the third floor, renovating that third floor is a great space up there, but it's very hot. Right, so you know, things like that, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, that's what's it, uh, you know, you, can you put in a window, uh, unit? Sure, right? It's not ideal and if you tell an architect, we want air conditioned, you know, the back half of the C E A, can they go with the plan? Yeah, they're going to give you a $500,000 updated, you know, univentilators. You don't need all that. I mean, we could do, you know, splitless ductless units on the walls. I mean, we've done that before through projects in our guidance suites or nurses' offices where we have, you know, a lot of 12-month employees kind of working. Um, if kids need to be there for, you know, those types of conditions. But yeah, that's absolutely what we're exploring right now with them in our meetings and seeing how we can get into the project.
Um, on that line, if you go, and that's what I was going to be my second question, but it's great for each of it. But, uh, I would think if you go that way, we should really look at the heat pumps and get the heat and the air conditioner both ways with the same unit. Instead of just looking for conditioning only, I would move to heat pumps. Start bringing the technology up in the school system.
Yeah, I mean, you could talk to me after the meeting, Brian, give some ideas to go back to the architect without looking through that.
And piggyback, backing up Brian, is anything we can do sustainable? Anything that we can do to make this district be more sustainable and be part of the green environment and the green initiative? I would, I would greatly like to see that happen.
Yeah, naturally I don't want to steal the thunder, but we are actually having the architect and instructor manager come in the October, October meeting for a capital project update where we're at in the planning process. And I think they'll have a lot more information at that time and some discussions would be great to bring up, uh, at that next meeting as well.
I just had, um, I'm glad you brought up Eric Hisham, I was also thinking the same thing.
Look at all these great minds.
Yeah, I just, I couldn't, no. Uh, I, I love the idea of the pre-K classes and I, I just, um, I think that's getting ahead of the curve, not trying to fix a loss though. I think that, is there any way that we can do more with enrichment or, or things?
We are doing that too, yeah.
Well, I, I, okay, I just, if I didn't know, but I'm just saying, any, even, even, because this is another thing that I know has been lacking for a very long time is, is enrichment opportunities and not just for the, the disadvantaged. Enrichment for anybody that can actually use it. I, I mean, I would love to see to get some of those other students or all the students, not, not with any kind of parameters that they can do enrichment, which would help them get and then move forward again, so. And, I mean, instruments, silence, oh my gosh, like all of it. But I'm just saying for the people that lost out, the students that had lost out, all of them, to get back some of what they lost instead of getting ahead of the curve with the pre-K again, but put something in to get, put something back with that money. And that's what I thought, that, that's what the strings were to get back stuff that we lost. So, that's it.
I think it's just looking at what we really, really need at first. What is it we really need at first with the population of the school and with everything going on? I think we really need to look at that. But everybody has such complaints and I was saying the same thing about the green, about the air conditioning, um, equipment, everything like that. Maybe putting it all into and looking at it and saying, okay, where can we do? You know, what's the most important, but where can we do everything that people have asked for and would like to see? And learning of course is one of the things, but equipment goes with that too. As we're helping the kids to learn more and getting them back acclimated again and doing what they do, the equipment, yes, definitely hardware equipment. That's going to be together. So if we can put these coming together like, then maybe that would help too going forward. You know, there's, there's a lot of things, you know, I know with Tom, I miss, I miss obviously the mind. I miss a lot of that stuff that we kept, but can we put that back in now? No, probably not with everything going on, I don't think so, but a lot of the enrichment, I know.
Well, we are, I mean, like, so we, we, you know, so again, like, we're, we're starting with yes. Whenever, you know, we're asking all the building level teams to think outside the box. I mean, I think Dan got a little press coverage in, in the, in this, the high school for their steering committee that they brought together, just people, let's think about how we can have engaging experiences for kids. Let's do shake it up, let's do something different. Um, we're asking all the buildings to do it. Let's start with yes and then we'll figure out how, what's the safe way to do that.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, I mean, we, we know it's key. We need to get kids excited about being here and about learning.
Right, it was missed. It was missed a lot and I think with a lot of them, they were missed. So if we can start building that back up again, you know, and I think it's going to be, look what we're going through now, I think it's going to help those kids tremendously to be excited, to look at some of the stuff that we're missed and now coming back and how we can do it. I, I, to me, it's exciting. To me, it's great, yes.
Julian, is there a plan for after-school time when the kids are between sports? Um, I know that, uh, the current thought is that for the kids like, so football players, they don't have practice till four in some days, so they're supposed to go home and have a bath. But I know some kids are hanging out, you know, going in town because they can't, they don't have that. But a lot of them really, you know, really struggled last year with the way things were and they definitely could benefit with having a classroom where they could send you their work or if there was like a tutor or a teacher there that could assist them on things. I mean, we're, we're starting off the year strong and we're trying to be where we need to be and everything. But I just know that having a good place to sit and get schoolwork done in that time, because when they get out of practice at 6:00, 6:30 at night and, you know, it's a long day. Uh, it would just be nice if there was some way that they could have that. And I wasn't sure if that's already in a plan because I don't know what your whole plan is.
Well, that's sort of developed because most sports are starting right after school. Um, so that, I mean, that would be the exception, I think, Dan. I mean, we, we, we certainly can look at ways to accommodate.
The other thing would be is that if there were students who did need to stay after for help, we have the sports bus at 4:30 that they could get a ride home with us as well. So they can use that time to get caught up if it, if it worked out for them. Because I know my students' schedules are jam-packed trying to get all the good stuff in and there's not a lot of schedule. That would be, that'd be great.
We're really concerned with having a sports bus is making sure that it's something that we can sustain.
Well, it's the one that's already there. Hmm? It's the one that's already there that I was speaking of.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm thinking of like the five. We used to have one at five o'clock and we had to put that.
Honestly, I think our answer also trying, the way that the money rolled out, not that we're not thankful for it, because it's an amazing amount of money through, you know, the, the legislation to really do something impactful. But they put a term limit on, you know, you have to use it by the summer of 2024. I mean, you know, I think if we were writing the rules, you know, give us a longer time where we could sustain programs and really have them last longer. And I don't understand why, you know, we're dealing with the, really, and a deadline now when those funds have to be utilized. That's kind of the problem. Cause, you know, a bigger district, that circuit, whatever, they, they could go through those funds quickly, right? But I mean, for us, we could really do a lot of impactful programming. It's, you know, again, and maybe that's in the works, uh, that you're in a feedback, you know, get rid of that deadline. Let us do, you know, 10 years of smaller, sustainable program, that would be more impactful, my personal.
I have a not popular subject. Important cleanliness of the school. Important is disinfecting of the school. Hey. A lot of people get paid for doing that job.
Based on M M H.
Is it important enough so that they're considered, I mean, I need them for a long time.
Hmm.
To me, that group of people that suffer and we have trouble getting applications. I know that. I think we've got to address that issue at some point in time. Not saying no, we got to know, but that's one, that's, you can't bypass it now. You can't get people to care about the job and how clean it is. You know, where's like between toilets every day? Most of yous had to do it. Okay, the, the disinfecting now, it's so critical. And we're just expecting it to happen by those same people. Just making a point.
Thanks, Sid.
Thanks for listening.
Anything else on that topic? Okay, that's a big one. Um, also, just as, just for your information, um, cheerleading, we, um, we're going to run cheerleading, but there was not enough people to do that. So we are hoping, just it's not hiatus, it's not going away. We, uh, hope for winter time, um, we will have cheerleading again. Uh, school calendars are going to be, uh, reissued with a corrected version. Um, our people, um, sent out the, the right final version, but, uh, the printers printed a previous version and they went out to families. So there, uh, there's some differences in dates. Um, we're going to send a mailing with, it's very clear and obvious that this will be the new version and send out lots of communication to say, these are the important changes. Um, and like get rid of the old one, put the new one up on the refrigerator, um, so there's not confusion. Our, uh, P R person was pretty upset about that. She was very diligent in making sure she clearly communicated which was the last version. Um, and then we, uh, had a, um, an award. You may, um, hear about it. I think there's going to be some press that the United Way is awarding us some $9,000 to, um, buy journals for all of our students, K through eight, um, so they can start the year, um, getting right back in the groove and, and of writing, but also thinking about their social emotional well-being, processing all they've been through this, through this whole pandemic and, um, their feelings about being back in school, but in a way that builds their writing skills and helps them, um, think of themselves as independent beings. So we're very thankful to be united with that award.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Okay. That brings us to our second opportunity for comments from the public. The Board of Education encourages public expression on school-related matters. Public comments that deal with personnel matters and or discipline issues that reveal the identity of specific individuals, either directly or indirectly, will be prohibited. As stated in Whitney Point Central School District Policy 3230, public complaints, questions of a specific nature should be directly to the appropriate office during school hours. The meeting chairperson has the right to limit and or extend any and all discussions. His or her decision will be final. Please state your name and residency before you begin and keep your comments brief so all members of the community may have an opportunity to speak. There will be a three-minute limit for anybody who is speaking, both online and in person. We have nobody online? Okay. Do we have anybody in person? Going once? Going twice? Okay. Um, that brings us to Board of Education comments. Does anybody have anything this evening? That brings us to Board of Education comments. Does anybody have anything this evening?
Thank you. I know how hard it's been with all the changes and I just appreciate both of you being not totally new, but new enough. I just want to thank you.
Hit on.
I just want to say kudos to all staff, everybody for getting things more back to normal. The community, I know the students are happy, the community is happy. And thank you for all of the effort and trouble and angst and everything that's going into this, because it is truly appreciated by everyone. Every effort from, I mean, everybody. The studio buses, I mean, I, I know everybody's working very hard to make this work and it's, it's not going unnoticed. So thank you.
It has to be a true team effort to make it all come together.
It's great to see the kids. So am a great granddaughter. We're so excited. I saw a picture of her today. School started with her backpack and her mask and everything. She's so excited to go. I'm going to see my friends, we have more friends. So it just was a great feeling, a wonderful feeling.
Do you have a great granddaughter that started?
Yes, I have a great grandson that started. He got up Saturday and Sunday and wanted to go to school.
Anything else from the board? Okay, um, we need to approve the motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:34 PM. Thank you, Kathy. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Thank you, everybody, for attending. Thank you. We're going to hold it just for the club.